Thompson here, Arkand.
Here.
Lloyd here.
Daniels.
Here.
Ellison absent, Newmaster here.
Strayfoji here.
If we could please stand up and take off our hats and face the flag to say the pledge. We have an agenda before us. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
移到
Who was that? Lloyd? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Newmaster. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carried. We also have before us a consent agenda. A consent agenda are those sundry items that come to us month to month like minutes, field trips, human resources requests. But the one item on the consent agenda that we are most thankful for are the gifts given to the school district from the community. They make a big impact. We appreciate the funds and the donations that the district makes to us and we want to thank you for that. Do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
移到
Lloyd, is there a second?
Second.
Daniels.
Second by Daniels. Any discussion? This will require a roll call vote.
Thompson, aye. Arkand?
Aye.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Daniels?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Strayfoji?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Right now it's time for our public forum portion of the school board meeting. There were five requests submitted to speak. I want to remind you the public forum allows three minutes per speaker. With one minute remaining, we'll try to give you a, let you know that there's one minute remaining. Speakers will be called up to the microphone and recognized one at a time. Only those individuals who have been recognized will be allowed to speak. And a reminder that school district policy and data privacy laws preclude personal and student matters or data being discussed publicly. So if you go down that road, we will have to stop you so you make sure we can protect the data. Superintendent's report. All right, we'll kick it off with our student report. It's all yours.
Girls hockey semifinals and finals are this week while the boys take on Champlin Park and Centennial. Girls basketball takes on Roseville and Woodbury this week. The school grounds coffee shop is starting sampling this week, so please make sure to try Tea Week and let us know your thoughts with the QR given.
All right, thank you, Bee. All right, in honor of February's I Love to Read Month, district students are enjoying a variety of reading-based celebrations. I would like to especially acknowledge our families, school board members, and other community members who continue to participate in February's reading activities in our schools. An example of the fun can be found on this slide with the mouse and the motorcycle visiting Virtual Lake Elementary recently to see the students off at the end of the school day. Our kindergarten families will soon receive kindergarten enrollment packets including elementary guides and elementary experiences, bookmarks in English, Spanish, and Mung. Also enclosed will be personalized letters that have school attendance boundaries information related to the agenda item to be discussed and acted upon at tonight's meeting. And recognitions this month, we have Black History Month. Last week was National School Counseling Week, Valentine's Day today, and National African American Parent Involvement Day, National PTA Founder's Day, President's Day on February 21st. So there is no school that day. District offices are closed. And Minnesota School Board Recognition Week is coming up later this month as well. So, in honor of School Board Recognition Week, we hope you all enjoy these special bear shee bars. Let's see where, I think you have them. They're there. We hope you all enjoy the special bear shee bars that we've created in appreciation of your efforts on behalf of our students and families. So, what makes up a bear shee's bar, you might be asking yourself. Coincidentally, the ingredients are reflective of the characteristics of our board members: thoughtful, accountable, open, representative voice, good-willed, conscientious, fiscally responsible, supportive, and proud. And thank you all for your service. All right, and finally, thank you to our students, families, and staff for their help in mitigating COVID-19 in our school community. Our combined efforts are making a difference and have allowed us to remain in school in person this year, even as cases rose sharply in early January after winter break. Over the course of the last couple of weeks, we have worked to update our mitigation plan as our absenteeism rate of both our students and staff members has continued to trend downward. As we shared with families via email earlier this afternoon, we are now at a point that our students and staff members have broad access to vaccines, boosters, and COVID-19 tests. Because of these variables, we will be, we will transition away from our current community spread decision-making model to a school-by-school face-covering mask decision-making model based on student illness absence rates. And the change will go into effect on Tuesday, February 22nd, when we return from President's Day weekend. And that's, that's what I've got. Thank you. Is there any questions for Dr. Kazmerchek? All right. Hearing none, then we can transition into our first discussion item, D1, American Indian Parent Advisory Committee Statement of Concurrent. Is it Baswee Wee, American Indian Education Program Specialist, and Mr. Andrew Adams III, Chair of the AIPAC?
Good evening, Vice Chair, Arkand, members of the board, Student Representative Tess Ma, and Dr. Kazmerchek. It's my honor to introduce Ms. Baswee Wee and Mr. Andrew Adams III, our AIPAC Chair. Tonight, each year they come and talk to us about their vote of concurrence or non-concurrents, which talks to us about our partnership between the AIPAC, our American Indian Parent Advisory Council. And so, without further ado, let Ms. Baswee Wee come up. She has her little one with the... All right, bujou. Baswee Wee Anukuduwe Indigenousa Kazma Engenindeore Mashkazibigai Niamama Keendunjaba. So hello, everybody. My name is Baswee Wee Anukuduwe. In the district, I go by Ms. Baswee Wee. It's like a school bus, Baswee Wee for short. I am from Bad River Reservation, and I live in St. Louis Park. And I am also a member of the Bad River Band of Lake Superior, Chipua. And I'm here tonight as the American Indian Education Program Specialist to present to you. I want to start tonight by offering you, as the board, an experience how I always start my engagements. And it's how I introduce myself to the district in my interview. It's how I introduce myself to students and staff. And it actively creates an indigenous space. So, I would like to just first give you a little bit of background. So I'm going to be smudging. I'm going to have sage, and I will light it on fire. There will be some smoke. In 10-plus years of me doing this, I have not had anyone have any sort of reaction. However, I am sensitive to that. So if you feel that you're uncomfortable for any reason whatsoever, or anything at all, nonoffense taken. I totally respect where you're at. And I'm just trying to share a part of my culture so that you guys can be inclusive of an indigenous space. And this can actively be an indigenous space, which supports our Minnesota statutes as well as our policy that we have, Policy 419. So, I'm going to do that real quick. And as board, if you want to nonparticipate, you're welcome to just say yes. That's totally okay, totally acceptable. So, when I do this, I have my sage in my shell here. This is an abalone shell from the ocean, and I have my eagle feather, which I'm going to use. I'm going to light it on fire. When we do this, we believe that it is grounding and just kind of relaxing. People use it today as well who are not Native Americans, when they, when they practice other kinds of like meditations and grounding and things like that. For me, it is connected to my culture. For others, it may not be. The plant itself does have properties, medicinal properties, and have been scientifically proven to help purify the air. So it's great in this time that we're in right now. So, I'm going to smudge myself. Again, if you do not want to, no offense taken whatsoever, just say yes. It's totally okay. I do this every time I go. And it is a kind of a step one to engagement with my culture and myself. Again, I believe that whatever smoke goes into the air, it should be in there right now. And I'm taught to not put it out. So I'm just going to set it over here, actually beside one of these tables here. It's because I don't mind being used to someone else. And it's going to be there. And migwich for openness tonight in respect of something that is very sacred to me and to my community. Again, this is like kind of step one of engagement. I'm taught to always start with our, our culture. So that when I work with our students, our American Indian students, it will always resonate more. Everything, if you start with the culture, it resonates more. And being that we all know our history, it's very important for our communities. All right, so I have been collaborating with the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee all year. And this is a bit of education about what we've been doing in regards to the concurrence. So, White Bear Lake is on traditional homeland of the Dakota people. Budote is where the Minnesota and the Mississippi River meet. It is the center of the Dakota people. This is an elder from my community. She says, "When we talk about land, it is part of who we are. It's a mixture of our blood, our past, our current, and our future. We carry our ancestors in us, and they're around us, as you all do, as we all do." So Minnesota has 11 tribal nation reservation communities, four Dakota, and seven Ojibwe. My community is in Wisconsin. So, Minnesota Statute, Section 124D, Point 78, Subdivision 1, states, "School boards and American Indian schools must provide for the maximum involvement of parents of children enrolled in education programs, programs for elementary and secondary grades, special education programs, and support services. Accordingly, the board of a school district in which there are 10 or more American Indian students enrolled, and each American Indian school, must establish an American Indian Parent Advisory Committee, commonly known as the AIPAC." This is a list of our members. On the top section are parents in the community, and we might have, I believe, one staff member on that list as well, possibly two, a couple. And then on the bottom, we have the district employees. So we have quite a decent amount of people on our roster. Prior to March 1st, this is in relation to concurrence or non-concurrents, prior to March 1st of each year, the AIPAC must meet to discuss whether or not they concur with the educational offerings that have been extended by the district to the American Indian students. If the AIPAC finds that the district and or school board have been meeting the needs, the American Indian students, of the American Indian students, they issue a vote and resolution of concurrence. If they find that the district and or school board have not been meeting the needs of the American Indian students, they issue a vote of, and resolution of non-concurrents. The vote is reflected formally on documentation provided by the Office of American Indian Education, OAIE. The vote and resolution must be presented to the school board by one or more members of the AIPAC. If the vote is one of non-concurrents, the AIPAC must also provide written recommendations for improvement to the school board at the time of the presentation. The school board does not approve the resolution. They receive the information, and it is reflected within the board minutes. In the case of non-concurrents, the school board is given 60 days in which to respond in writing to the AIPAC recommendations. This board response must also be provided to the OAIE and signed by an entire school board. This is the recommended timeline, which we have been following very closely. We did approve, we voted yes in our AIPAC meeting in January. I worked with our Assistant Superintendent to get on this agenda tonight, and we're scheduled to complete our documentation and submit. Again, the American Indian Education Program aligns with the school's equity commitment, which is to nurture the whole student. "We disrupt systemic inequities by recognizing, honoring, and embracing all cultures with humility and respect." This here is an example of one of our cultural engagement and enrichment activities that we have. In the beginning of the year, we were still doing in-person activities. And we had a drum and dance. The very first one, we had 150-plus people show up. It was amazing. And we have, I have hired contracted talents, so drummers and dancers to come in. And we invite people to not only learn about our culture, but also participate in a friendly way in which we're offering learning. Since then, we have added Ojibwe and Dakota language. We have added storytelling. We have worked with The Times and done virtual live streaming versions of this event. And we just continue to try to expand. And I've worked a lot with our communications department, trying to get the word out, trying to learn more and more about our district here, and how we can continue to get engagement and enrichment. And I believe that's all. So migwich for listening to my part of the presentation. And Andrew, if you could please come up here. I'd like to invite up our American Indian Education, or sorry, our AIPAC Chair.
Good evening, school board. My name is Andrew Adams. I am the father of a recent graduate from the district. And I've got two boys that are still in the district, a 10th grader and an 8th grader. I'm a citizen of the Muskogee Nation, and I've had the honor of serving as the chairperson for the White Bear Lake American Indian Parent Advisory Committee. And we did vote up the concurrence at our last meeting, so I'm happy to report that. And I would like to commend the district on its efforts to support the American Indians' students that are enrolled in the district. We really appreciate the fact that Baswee Wee is here to help support the children. And I guess two points that I would just like to bring up just really quickly in terms of, you know, sitting in the audience and hearing, you know, what has been spoken at the school board tonight. I, for one, as a parent of children in the district, would like to commend the district on its efforts concerning your mask policy, your notifications to parents when it comes to efforts to protect our children during this pandemic period. I know that it's probably been very challenging, you know, for you all. I'm sure that you as individuals and the institution itself have been attacked at different times. And I would just like to let you know as a parent that I support your efforts. And then the second point that I would like to make that's a little bit connected to this is, I guess, a point of concern that I have as a parent. And that would be that the district's Equity Director position has been vacant for months. And I would strongly encourage the district to fill that position. As you all can probably appreciate, when it comes to larger institutions such as yours, institutional commitment is a very important thing. And with a position like that, the way that it manifests itself is by putting an individual in that position. And I know that, you know, outside parameters may impact your ability to identify a suitable and well-qualified candidate. But I would just very much encourage you to redouble your efforts in terms of identifying potential candidates and in filling that position. Thank you.
I want to say migwich again. Thank you for listening to us. And giga wapamun, which means I'll see you later.
Do we, do we have any questions from the board? Anything I'd like to ask? Oh, we got a question over here?
Please.
I for one know how important it is to like share your own culture. And I was wondering if the members of the AIPAC community try to like do more like American Indian parts in our curriculum, like in our language arts classes and history classes. Is that what you guys would do, or?
So that would be an aspect of my role. And I actually have met recently with our Teaching and Learning Head, Jen Babish. And I have been receiving and looking through the state standards and the curriculum, and seeing how we can continue to align and work directly with our teachers. One of the things to know is the science standards in relation to American Indian culture. So we're definitely working on that and trying to see how we can continue to build.
Sure. I think it's super cool.
Yeah, great question.
I just want to thank you for that. And just even for sharing your culture and, and sharing what's happening with the AIPAC.
Migwich, it's a pleasure to be able to share. Up until 1979, my culture was something that was illegal, our language, our culture. So to be able to share is an honor and a privilege of mine. Anyone else?
Thank you for coming in. We appreciate it.
All right, migwich, you guys.
Okay, so our next item is, discussion item is D2, Attendance Boundary Recommendations. Mr. Wald, are you speaking on this?
I am.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Chair Arkand, members of the board, Dr. Kazmerchek, Abemnet. All right, so our attendance boundary process really started about 11 months ago. At that point, that was March of 2021, we invited our facilitators from Teamworks International to present to the board and walk through the process that we would be utilizing to evaluate our attendance boundaries. Again, in November, we presented to the board on process as we were about to engage stakeholders in the process. January, presented on the proposal that we were advancing. And now tonight, I'm going to summarize the proposal, and then later in tonight's session, we'll ask the board to adopt the recommendation. We recognize as district leaders, we are charged to lead the district through meeting the district's present needs, but also then looking ahead to the future and how do we meet the district's future needs. We also recognize that when we do attendance boundary changes, that there are real faces behind all of these changes. And so when we draw attendance boundary lines that mean change for families, we recognize those are individuals, those are students, those are families. We're invested in a community. And so we do it with great caution and humility as we advance those proposals. So I just want to say that because I know that these are not always easy things for us to evaluate. So, the demographic studies of 2018 indicate that we would continue to see significant enrollment growth in the north end of our district. And then the south end of our district, we continue to see ramblers changing over and neighborhoods in the south changing. And so it's been about, well, since 2012, since we really did attendance boundary change. And even then, it wasn't a significant attendance boundary change, inasmuch as it addressed a couple of needs and did not impact most of our schools. When that happens, sometimes you get some wonky attendance lines. We'll get into that in a bit. In the next decade, we'll see 2,100 single-family homes, 560 condos. If you drive up north right now, you see a lot of those being built. And we'll continue to see shifts in the southern end of our district, too. Like I said, this process began formally last November when we introduced the process. And one of the things we looked at at that point was the Guiding Change Document. That looked at the why, the not-how, and the what. And by not-how, I mean what are the things that we are not going to let impact the changes. We also looked at their motivation or purposes of the changes, and how we would move forward. So that was one of the principal, guiding principles that we developed early in this process. The first step in moving the work forward was the design team began to meet. And that was a team of district administrators who met from, well, May through September. And we were challenged to create as many potential designs as we could. And so, we develop ideas for designs, and then we would poke as many holes in those designs as we could, until we got to a point where we decided that a design perhaps was just not going to work. Or maybe if we made some, some changes to it, that design had some, had some potential. And so we worked through five or six different designs. And ultimately, we came up with one that we brought forward. And the second step was the stakeholder groups. And prior to the stakeholder groups, we presented to the board in November of 2021. The stakeholder groups were comprised of 81 community members and staff members who met twice in December. Those meetings were open to the public, and we published all of the documents that stakeholder groups would be reviewing on our website. We also, for each meeting, we created a surveys, feedback form, so people could provide feedback to the committee after each meeting. After the second feedback group, or stakeholder group met, we sent the survey out to all families in the school district, and we posted the survey on our website for a period of time. We got a lot of response. We had 599 people respond on, on those surveys. So it felt like we got great public input. On the survey, we asked people for feedback. And one of the things we asked them for was, "What do you like about the design? What are the strengths? What do you see as problematic?" Maybe it's a particular neighborhood that you see some problems with, or a particular school is being changed too significantly. What are the things you think are problems here? And so people gave us feedback on those things. And then we asked them, "What would you suggest we do differently?" And we got a lot of recommendations for that, some of which we were able to incorporate in the design, where we were able to honor the needs of the design in terms of balancing out our schools, but also impact some neighborhoods less through that process. So we certainly appreciate the feedback we got from people. It did, it certainly impacted the design that we brought forward. One of the themes we saw really impacted our proposal, themes we saw in terms of feedback is present in our proposal. So we're bringing forward a two-phase implementation schedule. And this was based on what we got from a lot of people. We said, "It's been a tough couple of years for a lot of us. And if we could postpone the implementation for a year, that'd be great. That would help us just..." That would help us just adapt, adjust, and be ready for this change. And so where we could, we did. And so there's two phases to this proposal. Phase one begins in 2223, and that's the ONICA and North Star Elementary Schools. North Star opens for the 2223 school year, so they need an attendance area. And we need to figure out ONICA and North Star. And so that will be implemented in the fall. And then the middle school proposal also will be implemented. We weighed the pros and cons of implementing that immediately or waiting a year and decided that we should move forward on that in year one. Part of it is central middle school is full, and we need to figure out how to shift some of that enrollment from the north end of the district to the south, based on that one of our middle schools is located centrally and one is located at the southern border of the district. That's a challenge because it means that there's going to be families who live closer to one middle school and will be assigned to another. And that will be true as specifically with the Birch attendance boundary, Birch and Lincoln, where you could see some families assigned to Sunrise Park that might be closer to Lincoln. This is the attendance boundaries that we currently have at our elementary schools. And if you look specifically in the center of the diagram or the map, you can see Birch Lake, Lake Ayers, Lincoln, Willow have some kind of wonky attendance boundaries. And I said, we made some adjustments in 2012, but for the most part, those attendance boundaries have evolved over time. And when that happens and you don't make a wholesale change, you end up with a map that eventually starts to look like this and requires a wholesale change. You can see Birch Lake is kind of a U-shaped, Lincoln, I'm not sure what that shape is, but it's an odd shape as well. Lake Ayers has a finger coming out and Willow extends along the southern border of the district. So those are going to, those create some challenges for us currently, and will create some challenges just addressing that. This is the phase one map. Now, on our website, we have high-definition maps for all of our attendance boundaries. And so you can look really closely to see streets where those boundaries line. You can type in your address and it'll tell you exactly what your 2223 attendance assignment is and what your 2324 is. For most people, that's the same, but for some, there could be a change. Okay, so this is middle school. The purple areas will be assigned to central middle school and the yellow areas will be assigned to Sunrise Park. This map is the phase two implementation and it shows the, shows the new elementary boundaries. So these boundaries will not be put into place for next year with the exception of ONICA and North Star. These will be for the 2324 school year. And if you look at that center of the map where I pointed out the kind of unusual drawings and you go back, well, just go back to this one. So this is the old drawing. And then you look at, these attendance boundaries are a little bit more logical. Birch Lake looks like it goes really far to the east, but it just covers the lake for the most part, covers the most of the lake so that no one's living in there. You know, I'll point out a few things on, well, this will probably help. So this map shows our middle school transition zone, but it also is good to show kind of where some changes occur at our elementary schools. So if you look at Vadniss Elementary, bottom left of this map, and to the north of Vadniss is Otter Lake Elementary. The blue-hatched area currently is in the Otter Lake attendance boundary, and that is going to be moved to the Vadniss attendance boundary geographically. It makes a lot more sense. Vadniss is a lot closer for those families. Going to next year, the Otter Lake students who live in that blue-hatched area will go to Sunrise Park. So this is one of the challenges where you have a group of fifth graders leaving Otter Lake who will be assigned to two different middle schools. There are currently central middle school families in that blue-hatched area who will be assigned to Sunrise Park. So that's one of our challenging areas. We suspect that some of those families might well decide that they're going to continue to go to central middle school. We're going to give them that opportunity. And then same with Birch Lake. So Birch Lake will have a much cleaner attendance area in 2324, but that area that is blue-hatched in the middle of the map will also be assigned to Sunrise Park Middle School. And so there, I talked about, there would be some areas that are going to live closer to Central but be assigned to Sunrise. We have some of those currently, people who live closer to Central will be assigned to Sunrise. And that area is going to get a little bit bigger than it is currently. What this does do is meet one of our guiding principles. That was that we would keep elementary schools going to, advancing to the same middle school. So when you look at Otter Lake, Otter Lake, with the exception of this year, that whole school will go to Central together. Birch Lake, that whole attendance boundary will go to Sunrise together. And then all the other elementary schools, the same. So that was a challenge and we, that was something we got a lot of feedback on is don't divide the elementary kids from one to two different middle schools. And so that's how we came to this plan. A few questions that we've been asked a lot. Can students remain at their current school after the new boundaries are implemented? We have a process in place currently called intra-district transfer. You've heard of open enrollment? That's different than this. Open enrollment would mean you don't live in the school district, but you want to send your kids to Otter Lake. That would be open enrollment. If you live in the school district and you want to go to a different school than you're assigned to, it's called an intra-district transfer. We have that process in place right now. And all of our schools have students enrolled in them from, through an intra-district transfer process. We don't have a single school that doesn't have intra-district transfers in that school, students who live in a different assigned boundary that attend that school. So that would be the case here, too. And there may be a larger number than we currently have. But yes, students can stay at the school that they were originally assigned to when the attendance boundaries change. Middle schools, that will probably come up a lot because we have, middle school would be a particularly hard time to change your attendance boundary. We understand that. And so a lot of those Birch Lake families, for example, live close enough to walk to Birch or to central middle school and they may choose to do that. As we staff central middle school for next year, we're doing so expecting that a lot of those current central kids who are, who would be assigned to Sunrise are going to ask to stay at Central. And we're going to staff that building to be able to do that. So the impact and the benefit might take us a few years to get that, to see that enrollment shifting self, but we need to get the process started, recognizing whenever we start it, there are going to be students who are going to want to intra-district transfer to their originally assigned school. And that'll be the case at the elementary schools.
Tim, I think we might want to add that generally those requests we can accommodate, but we manage that on an ongoing basis. So if there was a point in time where we weren't able to honor a request because of class size, for example, at a school, we might not be able to, but.
Yeah, there are no guarantees, that's for sure, that we're responding to, you know, the reality of how many students we get. But we're going to be planning that at Central, staffing that school for next year to accommodate those students. But like you said, that may not always be the case. Well, some students, some families who have asked, can I start my new, what's the next question? Can my student attend their new phase two elementary school in the fall of 2022? Again, that would be an intra-district transfer for 2223. And the answer would be yes, we would welcome you to submit that application. If we can make that work, we will. Again, it would be dependent upon space in that school, and we will try to honor as many of those as we can. Will transportation be provided if we apply to stay at our current school or switch to our phase two school early? No, we will, the district will provide transportation only to your assigned school. Some families will choose who currently intra-district transfer, if we can get them on a bus route, they can get to an existing stop, they can get on that bus. Again, space permitted, but typically there is space. And so, you know, that nearest bus stop may not be too far for most families. So lots of families do that already and that would be, still be an option to look at. But no, the district will not provide transportation outside of one's assigned attendance boundary. And can implementation be delayed? Yeah, that was one that we had agreed to, and so that's the plan that we brought forth tonight. So this is the proposal. Later tonight, you'll have an opportunity to vote to adopt this.
Do we have any questions from Mr. Wald? Ask Ms. Daniels.
Is there a date for the intra-district transfer cutoff date or a date that they should be thinking about that? Because obviously staffing is really, as you mentioned, an important part. So the earlier the better, I would guess.
Yeah, we were looking for March 14th to be the, there's never really a deadline, but it, but by March 14th, we need to make decisions on staffing. And so we'd ask families to submit it as soon as they can, but by March 14th. That allows people to think this through before spring break and then have a little bit of time after spring break to make their decision and submit that application. It's on the enrollment tab on our website.
Dr. Newmaster, did you have a question?
I think you've answered them, and I did see an email that you had sent earlier today that I think was a reassuring answer because I think this is very thoughtful. You guys have kicked this around with a real good mixed group for a long time, but there's always somebody that has a reason. And I know, I lived on the edge of the district and my kids in my neighborhood, over the years, it was three different schools. And it's never your favorite. But I think these days, when people are looking for one less transition, I think it's great to know that we're going to try as much as possible. And I could understand, my kids were at Lincoln in one of their transitions, you know, the people that can walk across the street to go to Central, that might be because they have an eighth grader there and they want to finish and then go to North the next year. So I think we all realize it can probably support. But I do really commend all the people that were involved and turned in the survey. And I just hope that everybody that is seriously thinking about an intra-district transfer understands it would be most helpful to do it as soon as you can for planning and staffing. And the other good part is every school is going to have some great facilities. So nobody is going to the school that doesn't have an extra gym or something like that these days. So I commend everybody that worked on this. Must have been a big headache. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Newmaster.
Ms. Strife, OJ?
I just have one question. Were any of the schools significantly, did their enrollment go down significantly because of adding the new school or are they staying about what they're at now?
They're staying, they're staying pretty close. You know, the ONICA, North Star is really serving Hugo. And so right now, those students were divided between Hugo Elementary for K1 and then ONICA for grades two through five. So those will be two, you know, instead of one really small Hugo and one really big ONICA, you're going to have two kind of medium-sized schools up there. Those will fill up over time, but there's space for that to happen now.
And any other south-side schools are all?
Yeah, this will balance out our south-side schools a bit.
Okay, all right. Thanks.
All right. Ms. Beloit?
The March 14th date, is that message going to go out to parents in some type of email?
Yeah, next week, we'll be sending out an email and it'll be specifically to families whose attendance boundaries will change. So we'll send that out with an indication, here's where you're assigned 2223, here's your assignment 2324. And then with the explanation of the intra-district transfer form.
And then how long is the expectation that Hugo will close? And then when will it open for early childhood education?
Yeah, Hugo, yes, Hugo will not, we will not open it next year, so it'll be kind of in waiting until we will need to open it for an early child. Right now, we're able to accommodate those early childhood needs in the, well, they'll be at ONICA next year. So it's six sections, I believe it is, of early childhood programming there. And so at that point, we can accommodate them in the K5 schools, but we'll do that. And then perhaps the, in 2324, we'll be using that as an early childhood center, depending on where we're at with enrollment.
We expect it to go any longer than 2324?
No, I don't think so. I mean, we'll see how quickly things recover, but I would, I would think it wouldn't be longer than that.
Thank you.
Dr. Newmaster?
I'd just add one little piece to that, too. As I look at all the ECFE activities that go on at Normandy Park, which is bursting at the seams, I know we were all looking forward to more space at some time in the near future. And so I can understand budget needs to maybe save full staffing. But I hope that at some point, we're not going to have Normandy as part of the space that's used for ECFE, correct?
Ultimately, Normandy will move to Sunrise Park as part of that multi-generational programming at that building, Transition Education Center, Senior Program, Early Childhood and District Center, and Early Childhood Special Ed, all of which will be in that site. So yeah, and then we think we'll be out of Normandy Park at that point.
Anybody else? Okay. Well, thank you. I think you're up again, are you not?
Congratulations.
Okay, we're going to go on to discussion item D3, general obligations, school building bond, series 2, 2022A.
Sorry, I was trying to get it very oddly.
Okay, actually, I don't even need this.
28.
I just.
You go way back, sorry.
Before this?
Yep.
Okay, well, there it is. Yep, okay. All right, so this is, will be before you now as a discussion item, and then we'll be bringing it back tonight as an action item, where we'll ask you to approve the resolution. So this is regarding general obligation bond, series 2022A. It's, the district is scheduled to issue $63 million in general obligation bonds as approved by the November 5th, 2019, $326 million bond referendum. The pre-sale report for this issuance is in the board packet tonight. Just some of the highlights. The use of these bonds are for projects included in our Building Our Future Facilities Plan, so it's consistent with the district strategic plan and the Building Our Future Plan. The bond sale is being facilitated by Ellers Municipal Advisors. Of course, they've worked with the district for many, many years. We have great confidence in them. They'll handle all elements of the preparation and sale of the bonds. A district will apply to participate in the State Credit Enhancement Program, which brings with it Standard and Poor's AAA rating, which, which makes these bonds very desirable for underwriters and banks to invest in because it's a very stable sale. They feel like, have confidence with the AAA rating behind it. District's previous rating is a AA minus and will be, will be applying for a new rating here during this process about the end of this month. Ellers will solicit competitive bids for the purchase of the bonds from underwriters and banks. The sale will, the schedule for the sale, so February 14th, we review the pre-sale report with the board and then we'll ask you to pass that resolution tonight. The week of February 28th, we'll review the official statement, distribute the official statement and conference with Standard and Poor's that will determine the credit rating. March 14th, Ellers will review and evaluate proposals for the purchases of the bonds. And on March 14th, the board then will approve the resolution awarding the sale of the bonds. Page six, the authorized bond amount is $63 million. Ellers expects a premium on this sale and the resulting deposit into the construction funds would be $63,588,032. The projected true interest cost of the bonds would be 2.59%. And that's just been refined recently by Ellers based on the sale of bonds in the past week. And that number's a little better than it originally was. The next sale of voter-approved building bonds will be for $13 million in 2024. The next sale of voter-approved building bonds will be for $13 million in 2024. Later tonight, we'll ask the board to pass a resolution, and then we'll get on to the business of getting the bonds sold.
Any questions for Mr. Wald? Okay, thank you, Mr. Wald.
Thank you.
The next on our agenda is discussion topic D4. It's the first reading of the school board policies. Who handles that?
Just first reading, so if there are any questions, we'll take those now.
Okay, hearing none. Those will be brought back in March for approval?
Yep, we'll approve them in March. And then just so the public knows, we have a first reading and then a second reading with an academic one. And then it goes through a, we go through a thorough policy review with a committee, including a couple of board members and the administration. We'll bring those back on March 14th.
Next on our agenda will be operational item E1, Action on the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee Resolution of Concurrents.
Vice Chair, Arcan, members of the board, student representative, Tassima, Dr. Kazmerchek earlier this evening, Ms. Baswaye and Andrew Adams III. Our APAC chair presented their vote of concurrents for this year, and so there's a recommendation before you that we accept the vote of concurrents as presented by APAC.
The recommendation has been made to accept the resolution, vote of concurrents as recommended. Does, do I have a motion?
No.
By Dr. Newmaster first? Is there a second?
Second.
Strife, O.G., seconded. Any discussion? Okay. Hearing none, we'll go ahead and do a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. The second thing on our operational is E2, Action on Attendance Boundaries.
Thank you, Chair Arcan, members of the board, Dr. Kazmerchek. Earlier tonight, I presented the attendance boundary proposal as a two-phase adoption. Year one would include the implementation of the North Star Elementary and Oneica boundaries, as well as adoption of the proposed middle school boundaries. Year two, as 23-24, would include the adoption of the remaining elementary proposal. The board is being asked to approve both the year one and the year two proposals tonight. And before you do that, I just want to again acknowledge all those who have spent a lot of time working on this project, the parents and staff members who have engaged in the stakeholder feedback groups through the process of writing survey responses and emails throughout this time. So just acknowledge that a lot of people were involved and thank them for their time.
Okay, so before us, we have the recommendation to approve the two-phase implementation of the attendance boundaries. Do I have a motion to do so?
No.
Ms. Beloit first? Is there a second? Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Daniels, is there a second?
It was Newmaster, right? And I'll second it. I'll second Newmaster.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and put this to a voice vote. All in favor of accepting the two-phase implementation on the attendance boundaries, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Now we're on to operational item E3, Action on the Revised Budget for '22.
Okay, thank you. I'll just point out the budget cycle that we start all of our budget presentations with. And in June, you passed the preliminary budget for the '21-'22 school year, otherwise known as fiscal year '22. There's a lot we don't know about the budget in June, and so we start the year knowing what we know, and then as the year goes on, we make adjustments to that budget. And so tonight, we're asking you to approve the adjustments to that budget. In, school budgets are based primarily, the revenue for school budgets are based primarily on enrollment. So as the number of students walk through the door, that drives our revenue almost entirely. And so we were on a good enrollment projection. The orange line indicates past enrollment, and so as you see that line continuing to rise, and then when the pandemic hit, things changed quite a bit. So that black line is our pre-COVID enrollment projections. The gray line is the adjustment to the project, or to the, or is the, excuse me, the '21-'22 preliminary budget projection. So that's what we based our current budget year on. And then the orange line is the revised '21-'22 budget. And so we know our enrollment's going to recover. We're taking a pretty conservative approach to how we budget that, because if there's one thing we know, is that we don't know what's ahead of us. And so we're going to be pretty conservative in how we project our enrollment. Andy Johnson is our Director of Finance, and she's going to walk us through the revised budget. Ms. Johnson?
Good evening. Detailed documents are available in your packet. I'll just hit the, at a high level, the total revenues and expenses. So before you, you have the preliminary budget and then the revised budget for this school year, and then a projection based on what we know right now for the upcoming couple of years. So as Tim said, our enrollment is down about 281 students from what we had projected for this school year, and that has a significant impact on our budget. And that is rolled into the revenue budget that you have presented. Starting off this school year, we were at about $125 million of projected revenue, and we're now at about $128 million. And that $3 million increase is really related to two things. So first is related to our student enrollment. So we're down 281 kids. That's offset very largely in our state aid, because in the preliminary budget, we didn't know where the state legislature would land as far as increases to the general education formula allowance. And that actually came in at about 2.45%. So that increase in state aid wasn't known in the preliminary budget. That's an increase in revenue in the revised budget, but that's really almost entirely offset by that decrease in students. So our state aid is pretty flat between the two projections. The real increase, the largest increase in that revenue budget is related to federal COVID relief funding. We have about $3 million of additional funds available to us this year. That also has a corresponding expenditure increase of $3 million. So you can see, we were thinking we'd be around $125 million for total expenses this year, and we're now projecting at about $131, so about a $6 million increase. So there's the $3 million related to federal COVID funding. We also have revised salary settlements, so almost all of their contracts were open for this school year. We've now settled most of those, we know, with pretty much, with a lot of certainty where those are going to end up. So we were able to recalculate all of our salaries and benefits, and so that's all rolled into the salaries and benefits budget for this year. And then the other large increase is related to our long-term facility maintenance expenses. So you can see in the preliminary budget, we had 4.8 million, kind of almost four from the bottom as the ending fund balance for LTFM. Originally, we thought we would carry those funds over into the next school year and tackle some of our facility projects next year with revenue that we received this year. And after approving the budget, we were told by MDE that we can't do that. We have to spend that money this year rather than carry it forward. As you all know, we have lots of construction and renovation going on, so that's not a problem to spend that money this year. So those expenses are rolled into the expenditure budget now in the revised budget. So those are really the major changes in this school year. All said, that then totals net change in fund balance of about $2.5 million of a deficit spend for this year. Now, that deficit really flows into mostly the restricted accounts, the restricted fund balances that you see down below. And the line that we really focus on, that the bulk of our operations flow through, is the unassigned fund balance that you see in blue. So at the end of this school year, we're projected to end at about $10,800,000, which would put us at 8.2% of our total expenses. And so that's a good thing. That hits right at our fund balance policy of an 8% minimum. And that 8% minimum was our target then, as we were projecting out for the next couple of years. So based on the enrollment projections that Tim just showed you, we used those to calculate our revenues for the next two years, and then making assumptions based on our salary settlements and cost of living increases related to some of our utilities, we kind of know where our expenses will hit. So keeping an 8% minimum fund balance, that then projects that we would need to have $3.8 million of budget reductions for next year and $1.4 million of budget reductions the following year. So those numbers are large. We're working right now on what those adjustments might look like. It's not a very big surprise. They're not real different than they were about a year ago, when we were looking at the budget and looking at the projections. They are a little bit larger, just because our enrollment isn't recovering as we thought it would. And so obviously, as we have less kids, we have more, we have less revenue, so we have to respond to that. So what does the timeline look like? So we presented this at the work session. We had some discussion at that time. Happy to have any questions, if you have any. We've been meeting now with the different buildings. We've met with about half of them, just to kind of present to them where we're at with our budget. And we now, in the next two weeks, have the rest of the buildings that we'll be meeting with. Right now, we're working on what the proposed budget adjustments will look like, and we'll present those to you at the next meeting in two weeks, and asking for approval of those at the March regular board meeting. And then we will be working on just finalizing the budget for the following school year. Hopefully, there'll be some good news at the legislature with some additional funding to schools to kind of help with that pandemic enrollment relief. We're not, we're definitely not alone throughout the state, feeling the impact on the, on enrollment. So if there is good news that we know of, then we'll roll that into the revised budget, or the preliminary budget for next school year. So that'll be presented at the May work session and then presented for approval at the June regular board meeting. Any questions? I guess.
Okay, so ahead of us, or in front of us right now, we have a recommended action to approve the fiscal year 2021-22 revised budget as recommended. Do we have a motion?
No.
Okay. Do you want, we'll go ahead and go with Ms. Thompson with the first, and then Ms. Strife, O.G. with the second. Any discussion or questions?
I have one thing. I just want to reiterate that this was an item at the work session, and so there was a lot of conversation about it. And so anything that would be asked now would be new thoughts or new questions that had come up. But there, we did have a rather lengthy agenda item at the work session, and then this is the approval portion of that conversation. So I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you, sir.
I meant just, and I think you already said this, but just a sluggish recovery of our enrollment. We're not alone. I mean, many districts across the state and the nation are sort of in that same position we are, in that we, we all were hopeful that our, our enrollment would recover faster than it has. So I think just to do that again, I think it's important for people to know that we're not alone. I mean, not that it's great news, but we're waiting.
But it helps to know that we're not alone. Yep. Nationally, there's, an article that has said that nationally, public school enrollment is down about 3%, and that's really where we're at. So we have, we're in good company, unfortunately.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, this will be a roll call vote. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Thompson, aye. Arcan?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Daniels?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Strife, O.G.?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Next on the agenda is our operational item E4, Action on the Resolution of the Intended Issue General Obligation School Building Bonds Series 2022A. Mr. Wald?
Yes, thank you. Earlier tonight, we reviewed the pre-sale report for the upcoming issuance of $63 million in general obligation bonds approved by a public vote in November 5th, 2019, Building Our Future Bond Referendum. We're recommending the board approve the resolution stating the intention of the school board to issue general obligation school building bonds series 2022A in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $63 million.
Okay, so in front of us, we have the recommendation to approve the resolution stating the intention of the school board to issue general obligation school board bonds series 2022A in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $63 million. Do we have a motion?
No.
Ms. Beloit with the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Daniels. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, this will have to be a roll call vote. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Thompson, aye. Arcan?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Daniels?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Strife, O.G.?
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes. Next on the agenda for tonight, we have Action Operational Item E5, Action on the Joint Powers Agreement with Intermediate School District 916. Mr. Wald, is this you?
Sure. So this is Action on the Intermediate District 916 Joint Powers Agreement. There is a rather lengthy process that was gone through to revise this, so member districts are being asked to approve it. I think it was, there was a version of it that was ready last, last fall, and then there were some modifications made to it once school districts and their attorneys had a chance to review it. So it's been vetted pretty thoroughly. There are specific questions. I know, I know Ms. Johnson and Mr. Wald, and I think Lisa Orin, I think they've all been part of conversations, but I think for as long as it took to get to this point, there were a lot of, a lot of conversations about how it impacts districts, and so our legal counsel has reviewed it.
All right, so before the board right now, we have a recommendation to approve the Joint Powers Agreement with Independent School District Number 916. Do we have a motion?
No.
Ms. Daniels first? Second by Dr. Newmaster. Any discussion? This will be a roll call vote, so I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Thompson, aye. Arcan?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Daniels?
Newmaster?
Aye.
Strife, O.G.?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. All right, operational number E6 on the item is the Action on the Bids for the North Star Elementary Communication AV Package. Mr. Wald?
Yes, thank you. Bids were accepted and opened on January 27th for the communications and AV installation at North Star Elementary. Project was divided into two scopes. Work Scope 27A was presented to, or was, the low bid was Olympic Communications with a base bid of $230,000. And then Work Scope 27B was by a company called Blum, was Tierney Brothers at one time, with a base bid of $322,921.53 for a combined total for the project of $552,921.53. And you probably noticed in your board packet that the original low bid for 27B withdrew, recognizing that they had misinterpreted some of the language in the, in the RFP, and so they recognized that there's no way they could deliver for the low bid that they had presented. They were $100,000 below the next low bid, so it's not surprising that something was amiss there. This is just slightly over budget, $27,750 over budget. We were excited with that first bid, thinking we were $75,000 under budget on it, but we end up $27,000 over budget on this one. I think this is the first project we've brought to the board that we've been over budget
Okay, so in front of the board, we have the recommendation to accept the bids for the communications AV package at North Star Elementary as presented to Olympic Communications Incorporated for the Work Scope 27A in the amount of $230,000, and the Blum for Work Scope 27B with the base bid of $322,921.53. Do we have a motion for, to approve?
No.
A motion by Ms. Beloit. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Daniels. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, this will be a roll call vote. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Thompson, aye. Arcan?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Daniels?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Strife, O.G.?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. The next item on our agenda is Operational Item E7, Action on Bids for the Construction of Highway 61-152 Intersection. Mr. Wald, I believe you're on this?
Yep, thank you. This, we've been, you know, building and designing a lot of projects over the last several years. This is the first time that we've done an intersection. So the construction of North Star Elementary requires a controlled intersection to access that lot, so. And that intersection will be built at Highway 61 and 152nd, and that'll give a controlled access to the school. We've been working with a lot of different entities to try to get an intersection. We've been working with a lot of different entities to try and get an intersection built is no small task. And so navigating City of Hugo, Washington County, MinDOT, Watershed District, Hardwood Creek Trail folks, there's a lot of people to get approvals from when you're putting an intersection. And so it's been an interesting process. SEH, our local engineering firm, guided the district through this under the supervision of old architects and engineers because they're, they're overseeing the project. But SEH were the engineers on the ground making this project go. So we're excited that this project is starting. Forest Lake Contracting has the winning bid at 1,702,179. Four companies submitted bids, and this project's coming in under budget.
Okay, before the board, we have a recommendation to accept the bid of the construction of the Highway 61-152nd Street intersection as presented to Forest Lake Contracting Incorporated in the amount of 1,702,179. Do we have a motion?
No.
Motion by Ms. Beloit. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Strife Oji. Is there any discussion?
I have.
Ms. Beloit first.
So this is an intersection, is this an intersection as a roundabout, or is this an actual intersection with lights? What's it, what does it actually look like?
It'll have stoplights. There'll be turn lanes, turn lane, so turn lanes, if you're heading north, to the right to access that industrial park, turn lane to the left to enter the school. If you're coming from the north, there'll be turn lane into the school. Yeah, so it's a fully controlled intersection, no roundabout.
And it's a fairly long, if I'm remembering the, the workup on it, it's a fairly long driveway to get to the school. So I'm just thinking about drop off and pickup and those kinds of things because obviously people aren't going to be able to back up 61. So there'll be enough space for the typical lineup for, for pickup and drop off, and we don't think that's going to interfere with 61 at all?
Yeah, that's a great question. One of the things that, in the traffic study that they evaluate is what will those queue lines, how will cars stack? And the good thing about that long driveway north into the school is that they'll be able to empty that queue on a green light. And so cars, if cars have to stack, they'll be able to stack on the property, not on Highway 61.
Thank you.
Ms. Thompson?
And then I just have to make a quick comment about, I mean, I understand that we always have to take the low bidder. I am, just want to make sure that we are ensuring that these companies are, are going to be abiding by the prevailing wage laws that we have in place and that we have people making sure that we are checking payroll to ensure that that is happening because in my looking into these different companies, I mean, they said they can do the job, so I hope they can do the job, just that they can do the job and pay the wages that we are requiring that people pay on these projects.
Yeah, I appreciate the comment. This, these are, all of our jobs are prevailing wage jobs. We post the prevailing wages at all of our job sites. And so it's very clear if you enter any of our construction zones that you're entering a prevailing wage construction site, and so it's all posted.
Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Beloit?
So what is the, this may be an in the weeds question, and I apologize for that, but what is the process? So we have a worker that enters the site and sees that, and sees that they're not being paid prevailing wage. Do they go to Kraus Anderson? What's, what's the process for?
Yeah, we have some requests, we've had requests to just validate that a specific company has paid prevailing wage. And so if, when we get those requests, then our construction manager, Kraus Anderson, works with the company to get the pay reports, the payroll reports, so they can be evaluated.
Thank you.
Ms. Daniels?
I have a comment, or maybe it's a question, but when we have an intersection like that by a building, does the community, either Hugo or the county or anybody like that share in that cost of an intersection? Is it just all on the shoulders of the district?
I asked that same question. Ends up, it becomes a developer's expense. And so the philosophy from MinDOT, City of Hugo, Washington County is, we wouldn't be building an intersection here if you weren't developing that piece of land. And so then it becomes a developer's expense.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, Dr. Newmaster?
After reading about maintenance and roads in the paper, I'm assuming we built this fine new intersection at the district's construction cost. Once it's part of the highway system and the county, they will maintain it, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, last call. Any more questions or comments? Okay, in front of the board, we have a motion to accept the bid for the construction of Highway 61-152nd Street intersection as presented to Forest Lake Contracting Incorporated in the amount of 1,702,179. This will require a voice, a voice vote, so, I mean, roll call votes. I'll ask the clerk to call.
Thompson, aye. Arcan?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Daniels?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Strife Oji?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next on the agenda is operating item E8, tentative agreement for the 2021-23 year White Bear Lake Community Service and Recreation Coordinators.
Good evening. And first up, I am just going to note both for this item and for the next item on the agenda, both of these tentative agreements do fall within the parameters set at closed session when we, when we discuss those parameters. So our very smallest collectively bargained group, but certainly not our least important, our two-member group here of our Community Services and Recreation Coordinators Group, we did come to a resolution there, so I thank them for their participation in the process. And then, well, we'll take that one at a time, I suppose.
So before us, we have the recommendation to approve the proposal for the 2021-23 master agreement with the White Bear Lake Community Service and Recreation Coordinators by passing the following resolutions. Resolution number one, whereas the parties have reached a tentative agreement on recommended salaries, value, and insurance contributions. So the, we did, is that all, do we do then be hereby resolved, or we do just the first one?
Yep, you're fine there.
Okay, so we'll do the first one. Any questions? Yes, Ms. Beloit?
Were they difficult to negotiate with?
Absolutely. A very positive conversation.
Isn't it an arm wrestle kind of thing?
Okay, any other questions? Hearing none, this will also be a roll call vote?
Oh, we need a motion and a?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, first we have a motion in front of us. Is there a motion?
No.
So move, Ms. Beloit. I was just going to skip it apparently. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Newmaster. Okay, now, do we have any further discussion? Hearing none, thank you by the way. We'll go to a roll call.
Thompson, aye. Arcan?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Daniels?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Strife Oji?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Is it the second part that we have to, on that, then go?
Nope, we're good there. We can move to the next.
All right, so now we're going to go on to operation item E9, tentative agreement for the 21-23 contract with the SEIU Local Unit number 284 Para Educators.
And this is definitely a larger group of, of our personnel. Again, a positive process, really appreciate the manner in which they came to the table. This was also a large group, so I'd like to thank them for the contribution of time to make sure that this came together and came to fruition. So again, our para educator group, certainly a group too that we greatly appreciate the service that they've provided over the last two years. So excellent to see that come together in a positive manner. So SEIU Local 284, our para educator group.
Okay, the board, we have in front of us the recommendation to approve the proposed 2021 through 23 master agreement with the SEIU Local Unit number 284 Para Educators by passing the following resolution, whereas the parties have reached a tentative agreement on July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2023 contract. Do we have a motion to?
No.
Ms. Beloit, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Daniels for a second. Any discussion?
Just one question. Did the SEIU 284, did that used to also include the clerical, or is that separate? Are those separate?
It does. And so it's, they actually represent three groups in the district. So the clerical group, which we voted on actually a month ago, the para educator group tonight, and then we'll be bringing down the loan here, down the line here, our before and after school.
But you negotiate all, all separately? Okay, thanks.
Okay, any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, we have a motion in front of us, which will require a roll call vote. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Thompson, aye. Arcan?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Daniels?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Strife Oji?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, next on the agenda is operation items E10, action on the annual resolution directing the administration to make recommendations for reductions in programs and positions and reasons therefore.
And so this, just to provide a little bit of context, as our board chair said, this is an annual resolution. We need this even in a year where we're not looking at budget reductions just through student choice, change in programming, and just student movement through our system, we can wind up in a position where reductions could be necessary. And so this is something that we do approve every year regardless of our budgetary situation in the event that we may need to make reductions on our teaching staff side. This year, of course, as previously presented, we are looking at making budget reduction recommendations as well. So this is certainly something that we're paying more attention to this year.
Okay, so we have a recommendation in front of us to accept resolution directing the administration to make recommendations for reductions in programs and positions and reasons therefore, whereas the financial condition of the school district and a reduction in the student course enrollment dictates that the school board must reduce expenditures immediately, and whereas the reductions in the expenditures must include discontinuance of a position and discontinuance of, or curtail of programs and on. So do I have a motion to, to accept that recommendation?
No.
So moved by Ms. Thompson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Beloit. Any discussion? Hearing none, this will also be a roll call vote, so I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Thompson, aye. Arcan?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Daniels?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Strife Oji?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Finally, on our agenda tonight, we have operational item E11, action on property purchase agreement.
Thank you, Chair Arcan, members of the board, and Dr. Kazmickich. The board has approved district, or district administrators to purchase property adjacent to the high school site if it's beneficial to the construction of the high school project. And we had a homeowner in that, in one of the neighborhoods, whose property butts up to the high school site, who has approached the school district and offered to sell their home to us, and we have agreed to that. We need board approval to do so. And so the property ID is in the board packet. The recommendation would be to approve the purchase of that home.
Okay, so the recommendation in front of us is to approve the purchase agreement for the property described as PID number 143022120003, located in the city of White Bear Lake, county of Ramsey, state of Minnesota. The board authorizes the superintendent, the associate superintendent for finance and operations to sign all documents necessary to acquire the property. Do we have a motion to move forward?
No.
Who was that? Ms. Daniels? Ms. Daniels, motion, there was a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Newmaster. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, then, this will also be a roll call vote. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Thompson, aye. Arcan?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Daniels?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Strife Oji?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Wall.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, now we've reached board forum. Do everybody take a deep breath? All right. Anybody have something they would like to share?
I do.
Okay, Ms. Thompson?
That's a little bit lengthy, I apologize, but I feel the need that I have to say something to our community and to, just to our district community. So bear with me a moment while I get through this. So I am speaking about, I am sad and frustrated to read so many emails that preach of the individualistic nature many in our community and society have turned toward. I would first like to address the emails we received that use football stadiums full of individuals who chose to put themselves in those packed stadiums. That is a choice and one that we are all afforded if we so choose. I would also like to imagine that many of them are indeed vaccinated and feel that they have done their due diligence to protect themselves and their community, and most importantly, that they have a very low chance of clogging up ICU beds if they indeed did catch COVID. That is not the same as a public school. In a public school buildings, we have numerous individuals who do not put themselves in those situations because they themselves or someone they know or live with do not have that same luxury. People who live in immunocompromised families, such as those who are fighting cancer, those who cannot get the vaccine due to severe allergic reactions or inability to access vaccine clinics, those who live with their grandparents, those who live, those who have generational trauma, whether it is due to historical trauma inflicted upon their ancestors, or those who suffer due to traumatic life experiences. They themselves have endured or continue to endure. The science and data shows that these populations suffer comorbidities at a higher rate than those who have not suffered from historical trauma. I also understand that COVID will be with us for a long time, possibly forever. With that knowledge, I understand that we cannot wear masks forever. I also understand that in my own family, it has never been a joy to wear one, but it has also never been a breach of our freedoms as Americans. It has never been something I have made my children feel angry about, but rather, it has been something we have done to protect others, the same people I just mentioned. It is a very small sacrifice for the greater good of all people. It is not what our country is about. Are we not the do-on to others, the ask not what you can do for your country, but ask what I can do for, I'm sorry, the ask not what your country can do for you, but what I can do for my country? That does not mean only the ones in my family, but for everyone in our communities. I do not subscribe to the, well, they can just stay home attitude. Perhaps when it comes to a luxury such as a football game, which the average American cannot afford to go to anyway, but when it comes to school, our children, every last one of them, not only deserve the right to an education, but one that takes place in a safe environment. So I ask our community to come together to support those who will now feel unsafe in our schools, to take a moment to talk to your kids about how we should all respect their right to wear a mask and to be allowed a safe and respectful distance from those who do not choose to wear a mask. I would remind our community of the district's bullying prevention policy. A safe and civil environment is desired for students to learn and attain high academic standards and to promote healthy human relationships. Bullying, like other violent or disruptive behavior, is conduct that interferes with a student's ability to learn and/or a teacher's ability to educate students in a safe environment. The school district cannot monitor or eliminate all incidents of bullying between students, particularly when students are not under the direct supervision of school personnel. However, to the extent bullying behavior affects the educational environment of the school district and the rights of the welfare of its students, and is within the control of the school district in its normal operations, the school district intends to prevent bullying and to take action to investigate, respond to, remediate, and when appropriate, issue discipline for acts of bullying which have not been successfully prevented. The purpose of this policy is to assist the school district in its goal of preventing and responding to acts of bullying, intimidation, violence, reprisal, retaliation, and other similar disruptive and detrimental behavior. It is not the sole responsibility of the school district to educate your children. It is a community effort, and it is time for families to take their role as parents seriously. I would ask as a reminder, on a day that we all acknowledge those that we love in we love in our lives, to also extend that love to people you may not know, and just be kind to one another as we move into this next phase and help each other protect one another. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Anybody else before I go?
I can't follow them.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that on Friday, I had the opportunity to meet with Perry Peterson, Executive Director of the White Bear Lake Food Shelf, and he's invited us, if we'd like to see the facility as a board, or a few members of the board, to see the, the facility and how it's working and running. And I want to acknowledge that they actually help our students when their families have food insecurities. They don't, they don't ask where they're from, they don't ask a lot of questions. You show up, and they make sure that our people are not hungry, and as we know, as an educational system, when students are hungry, they can't learn. So I just wanted to lay that out there, that he's invited us to come see it, and I just want to say publicly, thank you to the White Bear Lake Area Food Shelf for what they provide for our community members. Yes, Ms. Daniels?
Announcement. If anyone would like to take a tour of any of the 916 facilities, I'm the board rep for that intermediate district, and they provide services for many of our families and students, and just email me, and they have some dates set up if you'd like to see their specialized programming or any of their buildings. It's really a wonderful thing to step inside and see the great work they do, so just email me, and I can set up, I'll give you the dates, and I can help facilitate those tours.
Thank you. Ms. Beloit?
Yeah, so I just wanted to congratulate all of the teachers and staff today that were awarded the Glassroot, all those, the Glassroot, those presentations were done today through the White Bear Lake Education Foundation. Hugo, Otter Lake Central, Lake Air, Sunrise Park, the Area Learning Center, all were recipients of that. There's too many teachers, I won't go into, but thank you, teachers, for actually applying for those grants. It's really, really important. Those things kind of fall outside what the district does for personal and professional development, so those things are really important to go beyond what you would normally do, so congratulations to all those recipients, and thank you to the White Bear Lake Area Education Foundation.
Thank you, Ms. Beloit. Anybody else? Hearing none. We have gone through our agenda, and I'll just be looking for a motion to adjourn.
A moved.
Who was that? Ms. Daniels? I will go ahead and second that. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign? Okay, with motions carries, we are now officially done.